Row, Kyle.
Mayor Tony Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Coster.
Here.
Alderman John Doug.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Gray. Alderwoman Kathy Holt.
Here.
Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting made the 14th, 2013. You have a copy of those. You had an opportunity to look them over. Is there any changes or corrections? Or do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none. We have nothing under proclamations tonight. Item five, communications from City Administrator James Fincham.
Okay, first of all, the good news, we had our first Gov. Deals Auction since y'all approved that last month, and it brought in $15,000 in sales of surplus property. Our goal is to try to have one auction a month with the timeframe that it takes to get it set up, let it run for a week, and then give them a couple of weeks to get their stuff. That's about the timeframe that you can do it. So, our goal is to do one auction per month. Along that line, I gave y'all a copy of this right here. It was on the table in front of you. Ben approached me last week and wanted to know would it be possible with the new bucket truck, could we purchase an attachment that goes on that that allows you to trim shrubs, trees, brush, and it attaches to the bucket. Bill knows all about it better than I do probably, but the NUB was going to give us one to go on the truck, and they searched and searched, and they had sold them all to surplus auction, and they did not have one. So, we could've got one for nothing if they could've found one, but they could not. And what I would like to do, if it's okay with you all, is to take $2,000 of this auction money and appropriate it out into next year and buy one of these on July the 1st, and it will be in next year's budget. And it'd be $2,000 for everything. The saw itself runs about 1,700, and then you need the attachments and all the stuff, the cables and the stuff that it takes. And so, Ben said it'd be probably right under $2,000, but I'd like permission for to put that in for next year and go ahead and buy that on July 1.
Do we have to approve?
Strictly speaking, you don't have to, but the city administrators asked me. It'd be my suggestion we go ahead.
Because technically, we put it in next year's budget, but I'd like to go ahead and buy it on July 1, so they'll have it. Because Ben took me around and showed me all the places that they need to use it, and there's a bunch of them. And they're doing a lot of good work with it, but they're having to use a regular chainsaw, and you're running the risk of that thing dropping and falling. This thing's attached, and it can't fall. It's a safety issue. It's an efficiency issue. Yeah, I think it'd be a good piece of equipment that they've asked for and I think they need.
I guess what I'm asking is, does he need our permission?
Probably not. Probably not.
To set the precedent, are we...
Well, the issue I've got, Kenny, is we don't have the new budget yet.
Right, that's why, yeah, right.
On July 1. So, in this case, I think ordinarily, he wouldn't. He could...
I'm just trying to not spend money that's not in the budget.
Yeah.
We need to make a motion now.
Well, we need to. If you need to add to the...
That'd be my recommendation. Go ahead and make a motion. And give him the authority to purchase this equipment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no.
Thank you, and I know that Ben and Tim's guys will appreciate it. Another issue, just to make you aware of, one of the things that I have found from day one in this office, and you all are aware of it better than I am, again, I'm sure, is the complaints that come in from people in the neighborhoods on blighted properties. It's a recurring thing, and like two or three issues we've got, I'm trying to look for solutions kind of outside the box. I spoke with Mr. Morgan about the workers, the missionary groups that come in, the Sunset Gap, about that being a possibility, that some of these people, they don't have anybody to help them, that their properties are messed up and junked up, that maybe they could come in and take that on as an additional project, have a little extra time that they could use to put into that. And he thought that was a good idea, and he said that they'd be willing to do that. And so, we're going to try to put that into play. I've talked to Mark about making a list of properties. Only thing is, it has to be owner occupied, and they have to agree to it. It's not where we're... This is something, what we've been doing, of course, and you all know, neighbors complain on properties, we come in and inspect them, we try to get the people to clean them up, we send them letters, we go through all the... We jump through all these hoops to try to get it done, and when we clean it up, we send them a bill. This is trying to streamline that process. We're just trying to be a mediator on it and maybe find another solution that will help get these properties cleaned up, that doesn't take city resources. It's kind of being a middleman to try to help these people find alternative ways to do that. And so, if it works, it's kind of a pilot thing to see how it works, and if it is, and if it works good, keep going with it, maybe keep growing with it, use that other community service groups, maybe take that on as a project, and us help try to make that happen and help some people out. A lot of people need help, and so, you know, we don't want to be where we're just coming in and kind of strong-arming them. They need a little help, but we still, we have an obligation to meet, and we can't turn a blind eye to stuff. And I'm just trying to find an alternative to what we've been doing to maybe try to make this stuff happen and, you know, not have to go through all the legalities. The city recorder has taken a leave, medical leave of absence until September. Finance Director is currently working some and taking accumulated time some. She has health issues with a family member that's causing her to be out. We are definitely into a hardship here, and what I would like is your permission to hire somebody here to help us in the office. We have to hold a position for the city recorder because they're on FMLA, and in order for me to hold them a spot and to hire somebody to help us out, I really need you all to allocate a position, because I don't want to get into the same things that were issues before about filling unallocated positions, and I'm asking you all to allocate a clerical position that I can fill and let them take up the duties of the city recorder. What we've been doing is, for the last three weeks, it's trying, now fourth week, is trying to do that by committee, and that is a struggle. Both these girls here came in and worked Sunday all day to just get everything ready for tonight. A lot of the stuff we had to hand out tonight because we just did not have it ready to go Friday to go out in your books, and they worked very hard Sunday to make that happen, and that's why we had to hand a lot of stuff out tonight, and that's why it's kind of helderscale. But we have to be, we've got to ask for help. And what I'd like to do is hire somebody. I can't speak for the city recorder. I can't say whether they'll be back or they won't, but there's a possibility they won't, and they're either way, it goes, they're on leave till September, and so, I would like to hire somebody.
Do you need to hire somebody full-time or part-time?
I'd like to hire a full-time position and train them in that position and probably leave them in that position.
What do you need us to do?
I just need you to allocate a position, because right now, there is not one.
Do you have it written?
I've just got, I've got a cost. I've got a title. It'd be a clerk, it'd just be a clerical position. It would start out at $11.40 an hour, then at the end of 90 days, it'd go to $12 an hour. And that would be a total cost for a year would be $24,768.
That'd be counting benefits?
No, that's salary. That does not count benefits. That's strictly salary.
Are we paying anything while...
No. She has, she has one more week of medical leave next week, and then her leave will be exhausted, and she'll be on unpaid leave in the interim. Technically, you're not looking at any extra money because that salary more than offset this. Her salary was a lot higher than this, and so, you're not, you're really not going to be spending extra money, but I just need the position because we have to hold her position. I want to, I need to hire somebody, and I don't want to fill her position when we have to hold her position. And I'm just trying to stay legal.
What if she comes back?
Well, if she comes back, then we, I mean, would she would be back. I don't have, it's my intent to put her back in that position, but we have to hold her a job. And so...
When do you expect the Finance Director to be back?
Well, I don't know. It's going to depend on how this goes with her mother. She was here for half a day yesterday, and so, she was not here today, and it's going to be that way for foreseeable future goals. And so, it's put us in a bind. I mean, well, like I say, the girls, you can say they're both here tonight. Tiffany's training, another thing I'll go ahead and cover is on my list here. I have appointed Tiffany Deputy City Court Clerk. She'll be taking care of the court duties, no further notice. And that's, she's worked on that for like a week, trying to get that kind of called up. There's a lot of issues we're dealing with, and I just, I assume I'll just laundry-lick them out here, but, you know, I need the help.
I think that you can hire and you can follow her. I mean, if you need, I feel like if you need a person, harm, we're not losing nothing. I mean, that's my opinion. If you ask to have somebody, amazing.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
To approve the, what's the title of it?
It'd just be a assistant clerk position. It's just a general clerical position.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. We have a second.
I'll second it, but I have a discussion.
Okay.
Is that an approved title of the job description?
I'll have to go look. I didn't dig through it and see. I don't know if that's one of the ones that, I don't know, it's a clerical, I know we've hired general clerical position in other departments.
Just make, I would make sure of that.
I think it's called records clerk.
Okay.
Will this involve having benefits?
Yeah.
Does it have insurance?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be a regular position, but it'll allow me to hire somebody and yet hold her position.
But you'll have a job description on that stuff for this?
Yeah, I think there's one in there for records clerk, because we've hired, that's what, like at the police department, that's what one of the positions is, ours is records clerk.
Any other discussion? Row, Kyle.
Mayor Tony Ball.
I don't know.
She's learning, bear with her.
Alderman John Doug.
Yes.
Alderman, Vice Mayor Bill Coster.
Yes.
Alderman Freddie Gray. Alderwoman Kathy Holt.
Yes.
Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it.
I know you need it.
Can I just, will you put on record when you're going to post and hire?
I'm going to move on it quickly. The first thing I want to do is post it in all the departments to make all the departments, make it available to them for probably five days or seven days, and then from that point, I'll move on to general advertising on it. But it will be posted in every department for a week first, and I'll, I'm going to try to get that done by the end of this week, try to get that out there and get posted. No, I promise you, we'll stick to the rules. I promise you that.
I know you will. I just want to get it on record so that if anybody was interested.
Sure. And, yeah, you know, it's our for everybody. Another thing that's kind of a lot during this with these folks out is the signature card on signing checks and stuff. When I came in on the interim position, I had no intention of getting on the signature card because I didn't know how long it was going to be, but now it's caused with these folks out, specifically the city recorder, it's caused a hardship. We've really had to chase you guys down about every day to get stuff signed. If y'all would like me to get on the signature card where I can sign checks and not have to chase after y'all all the time, I'd be glad to do that. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm just saying I'm willing to do that if that's something y'all would like to do. And so, you know, it would, it would help expedite matters here, and we wouldn't have to bother you all, and I know y'all don't mind, I know that, and y'all, none of y'all have grumbled about that. I'm not saying that at all. It would just, it would speed up the process, not having to run y'all down and get you to sign something because there's not two people here that can sign.
You want to make that motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none.
Okay.
Do you have the document to sign tonight?
Yeah, I think she's got it. Showcase on the River. I've given y'all a spreadsheet on Showcase and Santa's Land, on what we took in and what we spent. We've talked about that a little bit at the workshop, and I said I'd get that to you. I did find out there's an additional bill that is, we've not received yet on the plaques that were handed out. It's about $350, and so, that amount, you can add on to the cost there, but we've not got that bill yet. I did ask them to go ahead and get that bill to us so we can get it paid in this fiscal year.
Is that on Showcase or something?
It's, well, it's for both, I think. I'm really not clear.
How much you say, James?
It's about $350. I think it's $346 or something like that. I need some guidance on this. I spoke with the mayor about it last week, and he said to bring it up tonight with you all. Again, we're down working with two girls. We haven't been able to really do anything on the showcase, and I'm not going to sit here and ask you not to do the showcase or ask you to do the showcase. We will do whatever y'all direct us to do, but if we're going to try to do the showcase, we're going to have to have big-time help from somewhere because these girls can do, and I can't, I can't do it. It's eight weeks until it's supposed to come off. We'll do whatever y'all want to do with it, but if we're going to do it, y'all are going to have to come up with some way to get us some big-time help to pull it off.
James, didn't you say that it was in the red $13,000?
Well, it's on, I think, it's right at $14,000.
Yeah, last year.
That we went in the hole.
We went in the hole.
Yes.
Another thing that we're going to have to do if we want to do it this year, we used the back of City Hall as an auditorium, and the doors are down back there. It's going to cost $3,000, I'm sorry, $3,000 to get the doors operational. So, that will be something that would have to be done immediately. I got a price on that on what it would cost, so you'd have to figure on it. We'd have to spend $3,000 immediately to get those doors operational. So, that would, I don't know, you know, I've not sat down and tried to figure a cause. It wasn't put into the budget last year. There was no revenue or expenditures budgeted last year on this thing. The file's gone. Regina has spent hours and hours going through trying to put this together for you so we'd have something that we could show you, a report on it, and so, I guarantee those numbers are off a little bit. There's no way around it because there were things we couldn't find, and so, that's the best report we can come up with on it.
With that being said, and it going $13,506.56 in the hole, I think it would just be redundant to carry on with something like this.
But it's y'all's pleasure. I'm not here trying to get you not to do it or pushing you to do it. I'm just saying that it's going to be, if we can't do it, we're going to have to have some kind of help to do it if we're going to pull it off. Because we're treading water, just like I say, they worked all day Sunday just to get us, without the stuff we needed tonight.
Kathy, you got a motion on the floor?
I would make the motion just to let it go this year. We don't have the monies to put in it, Kenny.
Oh, I agree. I'm just, I want to ask one question after the second.
I'll say it.
Okay.
Regina, due to the fact, obviously, you know as much about it as anybody, and do we need to continue this year or at least suspend it for this year? Okay. That's all I need to hear. Thank you.
And if you'll notice, there was probably, what, $10,000, $12,000, or $13,000. That was donations, and it was still in the hole, 13. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any other comments? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none.
Okay, one last thing, and I promise you this will be painless.
Save the good to last.
I've tried to start on a positive note and end on one. What can I do? We are, we're going to have an employee picnic on July the 2nd from 11:00 to 1:00 at the City Park Convenance. Certainly would invite each of you all to come and participate and fellowship and meet with everybody and talk to everybody. July the 2nd, yes. It's kind of, it's a July the 4th picnic, but it's on the 6th, you know?
And that was from, what, 11:00 to?
11:00 to 1:00.
11:00 to 1:00.
So, I just want to announce that, that it will be a picnic for employees, and it'll be at lunch and Tuesday.
At the park?
Yes, sir.
Tony, you can go.
If you'll bring a rice cup, I'll be there.
That's all the damage I want to do, Mayor.
I wouldn't say that. It's not over yet.
Well, strictly from me, sir.
Yeah, from you. Thank you, James. I appreciate the job you're doing. Okay, item six is appointments to boards. I have appointed Mansfield McMahon and Charlie Rathbone back to the Planning Commission, and Martha Loftus back to the Library Board. All of those have been contacted. They're interested and continue to serve, and each board would like them to serve again, and I'd just like to have a motion and a second and a show of support from the board.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear it. Okay, nothing under seven or eight. Go to new business, item nine. Consideration of First Reading of Ordinance 2013-10, City of Newport Budget Amendment.
Yes, Mayor, I'll agree. Chapter, that's ordinance number 2013-10, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport's budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none. Item B, consideration of first reading of Ordinance 2013-11, Temporary Budget for Newport Animal Shelter.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2013-11, an ordinance to approve of a temporary budget for the Newport Animal Shelter for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2013, and ending June 30, 2014.
Do we have a motion to approve on the first reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. Hear none. Item C is consideration of first reading of Ordinance 2013-12, Municipal Flood Damage Prevention.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2013-12, Municipal Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, an ordinance adopted pursuant to the Private Act Charter for the purpose of amending the city of Newport, Tennessee, municipal code regulating development within the corporate limits of Newport, Tennessee, to minimize danger to life and property due to flooding and to maintain eligibility for participation in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Do we have a motion to approve that on the first reading?
This for record, this is the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
It is.
It is.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. Hear none. Item D is consideration of Resolution 2013-10, Continuing Operating Budget, 2012, 2013. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none. Item E is discussion of insurance benefits for city employees.
Mayor, that was one thing that didn't get to go out on Friday. I left copies of everybody in front for everybody there. After extensive meetings with Ms. Moyer's and looking at every option available, I feel like that the best option we have at this time is to renew what we have, and you have in front of you, Derek, roughly $59,000, to continue on through next year, keeping the exact same coverage that we have at this time.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm going to make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none.
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to take about 30 seconds and thank Cindy again this year, because every year, I give her a hard time, and we fight and struggle to keep these things within reason, and every year, she's done a good job of coming back, and I want also, James, the board, everybody this year, tried to do every option conceivable to put a better package on the table and still be cost-effective, and Cindy worked with us and put up with a lot to get to this point, so I think that this wasn't an easy process this year, obviously, and Jane worked hard and sold it to Cindy, and I just want to give them a pat on the back, because it's a, that is a tough process to go through for us every year.
Thank you, Kenny. Next on the agenda is discussion of tax anticipation note.
I'd like to make a motion to change authority to go ahead and apply for a tax anticipation note. Do we need a man on that?
Well, it speaks the same as like $600,000.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none. Item G is discussion of T-Dot Maintenance Contract.
Of course, this is the same contract we've, I think it's like the 20th year that we've looked at entering into this contract with the state. Y'all are familiar with it, and it's just that every year, we have to renew it. It's just a way where we can build the state for about $51,000, the stuff that we do already, and we can build in for it. We get to pull them out every year.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none. Under H is a consent agenda which contains a roadblock for the Edgemont Middle School Football, 8, 10, and 13, and a roadblock for the Newport Fire Department, 10, 5, 2013. Do we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none.
James, are there any dates available left for this year to do roadblocks?
I will have to check. That's on Jessica's computer. We'll have to check that.
Okay, thank you.
Item I is consideration of second reading of Ordinance 2013-09, the Newport Grammar School Budget Amendment.
You need to read it. Yes, as a mayor, that's ordinance number nine, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport's budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013. And as the mayor said, this will be the second reading and the second vote.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve on second reading? Okay, do we have a motion to approve on second reading?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose is no. I hear none. We have no bids, purchases, or expenses. Floor's open. Comments from citizens?
Mayor, if I could, I would.
Yes, sir.
We have a situation downtown where the detour signs are up and beyond them, that the Conagra sign says straight ahead, it's not near as big as the detour sign, we're continuing to have traffic get over in this area and get stuck. We're also having a problem with, they, a couple of weeks ago, they tore Vans down three times in a row, they were trying to turn around, and it's just people trying to find Conagra, and they're believing the GPS, if it says, you know, turn around, go back, they will. And we just, I'd like to have permission or just to let you all know that I intend to work with Ben and get a bigger sign saying Conagra traffic straight ahead, and hopefully we can alleviate this problem of these big trucks getting in here and destroying the properties and getting lost, having to turn around, it'll just make everybody's life easier. But I just want to let you all know that's what I intend to do, to try to alleviate that problem.
That's good. Thank you, Chief. Any other comments?
Councilwoman would like to mention that this Saturday, June 15, we will be observing Elder Abuse Awareness Day out at Newport U. T. We invite everyone to come out and partake of the events out there on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, you may talk about, for me, what we talked about the last meeting, about the ordinance statement. I'd like to, I'll be right back.
Any other comments from citizens?
Mayor, the car shows this weekend too, so we hosted it at the City Park part-time, and James and I talked about it a little bit before, is that the Pirates of the Pigeon is such a popular event. I would like to have an opportunity to explore that and offer that program for Parks and Parks and Rec, and not have the showcase this year if it's possible, if we would agree with that. I would like to do that.
That one has a specific sponsor every year, am I correct?
Yes.
Do we need to, do you need a motion or?
No.
We can just leave it.
I think it's a good event, especially because it has a specific sponsor every year, I think.